All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order with the invocation of the pledge by Mr. Scott King.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for all the many blessings, for freedom, our liberties that we have in the U.S. Please look over us tonight as we do your will. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge and conditions to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. Thank you for coming out. All right, item number one, adoption of consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Curry, second by Dr. Rucker. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? There are no additions to the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as made? First motion by Mr. Coon, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, item number three, employee service awards. We have a bunch of people tonight, and it's quite an honor to have people that stick with our county for this number of years. And this is one of the things that we all take great pride in. So I'm gonna come up here, and we're going to recognize those wonderful people. Jasmine E. Melnick-Ruth, one of my former angels as a student. Five years of service. Richard Rick Palmer. Five years of economic development. Now a lot of activity.
I'm motherfucking.
Huh?
I'm motherfucking.
Oh, you're Richard. Joseph Pickle, Public Works. Ten years. Akiva Tanner Shelton, ten years Sheriff's Department. Timothy Jaden Hubbell, fifteen years. Sheriff's Office also. Thank you for your service, my friend. Appreciate all y'all do for us. Oh, they yell at y'all. All right, Jeffrey Martin, Building Maintenance, twenty years. Connie Johnson, twenty years, Sheriff's Department. All right, Tony Agnew, twenty years. Thanks, gentlemen, for your service. Your smile is always blinding. I assume you smile. Your smile is always blinding. Deborah Meager, twenty-five years. Thank you, thank you, thank you, your service. And that's also the Sheriff's Office. So I appreciate every attention of the Sheriff's Department. Y'all, we together here till we can get, I guess, can't see the sticks with. Well, I'll get out of here. I'll get reasons on.
I've heard Tony a lot.
Okay. Okay. Thank y'all so much for your years of service. I think quite as ten, twenty, thirty, fifty, seventy, ninety, hundred and five. Twenty-seven, folks, Miss Agnew. Anyway, we got over a hundred years of service there. Thank y'all. That's, that's great. We appreciate y'all staying with us and making the county a better place. Newberry Soil and Water, personal appearances tonight, we got Newberry Soil and Water Conservation District, Mr. Joseph Berry, District Coordinator, and Mr. Doug Height-Trese. Doug, you two? All in one?
All in one.
All right. Thanks for being here, my friend.
Thank you. We appreciate your invitation, being able to speak to you all this evening. I'm Doug Height. I'm the Treasurer of Newberry Soil and Water Conservation District. And Joseph Berry, our district coordinators with us this evening. We just want to go over a few of the highlights that you've helped finance and your leadership over this past year, and some of our programs that we're getting ready to move on this next year. Next week is our big, big project for our district with Camp Conservation. This year again, it's gonna be held at Wilson's Farm in Silver Street, which they graciously just let us use. We've got over forty campers signed up, and we have a waiting list. However, each camper and their parents, along with the volunteers, have a twelve-page document on how to stay Corona-free. So we've got a lot of guidelines in place. Joe is probably gonna spend more time taking temperatures and writing down stuff than actually being the leader out there this year. So we're looking forward to that. Our registration doubled this year, so we're excited about that. So hopefully we'll get a few more next year. So forty kids, and we wish that we would've had it this week with this cool weather, but we'll beat the heat. Another project that we're working on is the feral hog program. Feral hogs have gotten to be very bad in Newberry County. We are one of the two of, two counties in the state that are a pilot program, and we've been selected, along with twenty other counties in the southeast, to be included in this federal feral hog trapping program. By the end of next month, we hope to have all agreements signed and begin working on setting up locations with USDA agents to help local landowners fight this problem. The grant that we're receiving is for three years, and it's over three hundred thousand dollars, which seventy-five percent of that is from federal funds. So if you know of any landowners, or your neighbors, yourselves, just call the office and let Joe know, and we can get you on the sign-up list. We've had a pretty good response already on this program. So we hope that works out, and if it works out, we may be able to continue it down the road, so. Another partnership we've developed is with the federal government, with the USDA, and we're expanding the impact of the Natural Resource Conservation Service that we have in the county. We recently worked with the NRCS, South Carolina DNR, and the South Carolina Forestary Commission to pull in over sixteen thousand dollars of funds together to hire a wildlife biologist for the county. This shared position is likely the first of its kind, and will help all agencies within the county and help spread the workload over these other agencies. Instead of one person trying to do that, we'll have an expert in that field. And we have also already hired him to work, work with our agencies. And finally, I gotta mention, I gotta brag on our district a little bit. Our chairman, Ben Sessler, was recently elected as Vice President of the Conservation Districts of South Carolina. That's quite an honor. He was also recently selected to join the inaugural program of the Palmetto Leadership Program, which is part of the environmental, agricultural, and forest programs of Clemson University. And this is for the top twenty-four, twenty-five young people that they're training to become leaders down the road for our counties and our state. So it's something that's been done in other counties in the southeast, and South Carolina is starting to implement that too. Along with Ben's achievements, Joe was elected this year as Vice President of the State Employee Association. He'll be taking over his duties for the president this fall. So we look forward to having Joe as our voice between the county and the state. And lastly, that if you have not seen in the paper, thank you, Andrew, for the publicity, is Newberry County was selected as the state winner for the Soil and Conservation Districts. And for that honor, we received this pump that we get to keep for one year. At the next annual conference in Charleston next February, if we don't receive it again, it moves on to the next recipient. So it's quite an honor. So if you see that in our office when you come in, that's what it's for. Also, they'll, we'll be receiving a plaque with our name to put up on the wall that says we were a state, state winner. So finally, I just want to thank you for your financial support and leadership support this past year. We've got a lot of exciting programs. It's been a challenge with the COVID, trying to keep programs going, rain barrel workshops, other, other things. But we just want to say thank you, and we appreciate everything you do for us. And if there's anything that you have that we can help you with, or suggestions, just call Joe at the office on Kendall Road, and we'll try to see what we can do for you. Thank you.
Doug, thanks a lot. Going back to your start off with the feral hogs and then the ending of it, there's a lot to root about there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. No pun intended, right? But thank you, and thank you all for what your team does out there. Anybody else got any comments they'd like to make?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank, thank them for all, all that they do, and that we truly enjoy the banquet that you have every year as well.
They do a great job. Big group.
Yeah, good group, a lot of support, great county, so appreciate you being here, appreciate all you do yourself. All right, item number five, ordinance number oh-two thirteen twenty, an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year nineteen twenty, fiscal year, ordinance number oh-four oh-four nineteen, to provide for revised revenues and appropriations. Mr. Adams?
Chairman, this ordinance reconciles the actual expenditures and revenues with those that were originally included in the nineteen twenty budget in advance of the fiscal year's end, which is in just thirteen days. Revenues will reflect updated estimates based on actual receipts. And expenditure items to be amended include the salaries for law enforcement officers and some economic development costs. I believe this is the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Clarify this, the public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public to speak pro or con? Hearing none, we'll call the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion to speed to third reading? Motion by Dr. Rucker, second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, ordinance number oh-five sixteen twenty, an ordinance amending, an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale, not exceeding one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar general obligation bonds for Newberry County, South Carolina, for the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds of such obligations shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto, to amend and use a, use of a portion of the proceeds of the bonds authorized there be. Thereabout. Mr. Adams?
Chairman, this ordinance reallocates three hundred thousand dollars in funds from the FY nineteen twenty budget. That funding was originally intended to purchase and renovate an existing building for the Facilities Maintenance Department. Instead, the funding will be used for courthouse elevator repair in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty thousand, a detention center alarm system at eighty-five thousand, consolidated fire, consolidated fire department roof replacement, thirty thousand, and prosperity fire department roof replacement, thirty-five thousand.
All right, you've heard the explanation. This is the public hearing. Do, I declare the public hearing open. Anybody from the public to speak pro or con? Hearing and seeing no one, we declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion to speed to third reading? Motion by Mr. Stottman, second by Mr. King. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number seven, ordinance number oh-six seventeen twenty, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding one million, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar general obligation refunding bonds of Newberry County, South Carolina, to prescribe for the purpose for which the proceeds of such obligations shall be expended, to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto. Title only. Mr. Adams?
Chairman, this ordinance provides for the reissuance of the county's twenty-eighteen bonds, which have no prepayment penalty. The prevailing lower interest rates are expected to save the county approximately seventy-five hundred dollars annually, and we're already paying issuance costs for some other debt anyway, so might as well save a little money.
That's wonderful. All right, this is the first reading. Do we have a motion to speed to first reading? Motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Stottman. Any discussion? Think anytime we can save seventy-five hundred dollars is a good thing, so all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, at this point, executive session. I don't think we need one tonight. Committee report, Economic Development Committee, Mr. Rick Palmer?
Chairman, members of council, you're not happy, delighted I am to be here tonight and participate in a little bit of normalcy. I couldn't show us why, recently said it's so very glad to be here tonight. I'm actually here tonight to report out two Economic Development Committee meetings. There was one in March. And then immediately after that, council postponed that, so here I am to talk about two meetings. Your Economic Development Committee meeting, committee met on Monday night. We talked about numerous different things with project activity. Project activity should be no surprise. It has slowed dramatically with, in the era of COVID. We had five new projects in the first quarter. We had two in the second quarter. One of the interesting things is that a survey by Site Selectors Guild found that fifty-two percent of current projects are on hold, and forty-five percent continue to move forward. I think the number one holdup is because nobody's traveling now, and economic development projects just do not get completed without boots on the ground and people traveling. Talked to the project manager, the lead project manager of Department of Commerce recently, and he told me that, told me they've only had about twelve active projects delayed. In terms of product development, very pleased to report that our new Marlboro Development Team spec building has been completed. These are actual photos. They are not renderings. It's a beautiful facility. This is the area, of course. You see, this is the new spec. That's MM Techniques, that's KRA, and that's SWM. So this park has come a long way in the last five years, and we're very, very pleased to, to add this addition to it. It accounts for about seventy-five percent of our project submissions in recent history, so we're delighted to have it. We would love to have a, an event in the near future where we would invite everybody out for, I don't know, snacks and drinks, and just so you can actually see and witness and visit the facility, because it's a tremendous facility. In terms of product development, we have two site development initiatives we're working on. One is a Duke site readiness effort. About nine months ago, Karen and I came up with a prospective site that was in Duke service territory, which is a bit difficult to do, because Duke service territory, they have the Whitmire area, and they have a few thousand acres between Newberry and Prosperity. So it's kind of difficult to find sites within their footprint. But I try every year, because they are a big partner, and I always want them behind me when we're working on economic development projects. We had a meeting just yesterday with the Strategic Development Group, which is a well-known site consultancy that's based in Greenville, but they do work all across the globe. Duke was at the meeting yesterday, too. We evaluated, we spent several hours talking about the site, the physical parameters of the site, the utilities, the topography, those type of things. And everything looks very, very good. And I believe that unless we discover some fatal flaw during the testing process, like an endangered species or an unknown environmental condition, I believe we're gonna be very good in this, in this process. Duke will spend up to forty thousand dollars testing, evaluating, and marketing the site. Newberry County's on the hook for a thousand dollars, so the forty-to-one ratio is quite good. We do have a letter of intent with the owner. It's a non-binding thing, but we're continuing to work on the possibility of leveraging some type of control over this so we can control our own destiny. We just don't have to kind of gamble in the future, so. We're excited about that. There's another site that we're working on. Well, this is a larger industrial park that could host some large projects. We're a little bit stalled on that with the, with the owner permissions, but we continue to work forward on that. We did pass a Palmetto Sites Evaluation a few months back, and we worked really hard on it. This is a small marketing thing that we did, the South Carolina Department of Commerce. It's granting us up to five thousand dollars each for five professionally-produced drone videos. Everything is video today, and the drone video is pretty much a requisite. You have to have these things on your website so that other people can see it before they actually set foot on town. We selected five sites for this. We've already got one. I didn't include it for the sake of brevity tonight, but they're in draft form. They're not quite ready for, for a public review anyway. So we're excited about that effort. Won't cost us a nickel. In terms of prospect development, that's one of the, the victims of COVID. There's not a whole lot going on. The Korean mission was canceled. My Washington DC site consultants meeting was canceled. Nobody is traveling right now in terms of economic development, almost nobody. I'm sure there's some diehards out there, but State Department of Commerce is still out. They, they're not even working from the office. I believe they were supposed to return next week, but that's under question now since we've had a spike in new cases, so. In terms of other things, at the March meeting, the Economic Development Committee approved an eighteen thousand dollar quarterly invoice for the Central SE Alliance. That kind of got lost in the, in the COVID shuffle since then. So if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I would wonder if council would consider approving that ordinance in full tonight. This was approved at the March Economic Development Committee meeting.
They can't, Rick. It has to be noticed on the agenda. Any vote has to be noticed on the agenda.
All right, then we'll, we'll step forward then. COVID-nineteen, one of the things that my job, since there wasn't as much going on in the project development side, but my existing industry services side kind of exploded during this, especially in the early days. I found that existing industries needed lots of support. They didn't know what was going on. They didn't know how to handle the workplace. So we spent a lot of time distributing information from the CDC, from the state of South Carolina, from CISA, from a different, from OSHA, from different federal agencies, so, so forth, giving them guidance on how to deal with COVID in the workplace. We also very, very proud that we reached out to our local industries. I collected about, about three hundred and fifty N-95 masks, a lot of paper, PPE gowns, and boot covers, and those kinds of things. I distributed and passed those on to Newberry County Emergency Services, where he rationed them out to the different agencies and so forth around the county that were, that were in need. We've been doing regular surveys of existing industries. When this all started, we were doing about one a week. Now we're doing it about once every two weeks, asking them what they need, what the conditions are like there. Do they screen? Have they had any layoffs? Have they had any shutdowns? Those types of things. For a while there, our existing industries were all over the place. Some were doing gangbusters business. We had one that was running twenty-four-seven, because the customers were demanding more during the COVID crisis, because they wanted to stock up. Then we had others who had order cancellations. Kiss Wire is an example. Cars were not being sold. That means tires are not being sold. That means they're not filling orders for the wires that go in the tires. Most are back to a relative state of normal. It's not completely normal, but they're, everybody's back up and running now. And, and I'm pleased to report that most are confident that this is a temporary thing, and, and, and we'll see where it goes from here, but most of our industries are back up pretty much to normal now. We, we received some thermometers from FEMA. It was a couple of months late. But these are the no-touch type thermometers. They were specifically for dispersal to existing industries, and so we've been passing those out as well. and so we've been passing those out as well. Uh, last item, Toast of the Town, of course, was, well, is always scheduled in May. We canceled it in, um, in late March, just because we could see that it wasn't going to happen, and other things were being canceled. We're still kind of fluid on whether that'll happen in 2020 at all. I think chances are probably unlikely, but we'll wait and see and evaluate as we go. I only need about a month to raise the money that we need for this event and do the invitations and all that, so we'll just wait and see on that, so.
Uh, before you...
Yes, ma'am.
Go back. So, since we couldn't approve the invoice tonight...
Yes, ma'am.
Um, by the time we meet again, I, I think it will be time for us to approve another?
Yeah, we'll probably, we'll probably have two in the next meeting.
So, we'll, we'd have two, so don't forget to do that.
Yes. Um, I'd like if it's, if it's possible to have it on the agenda, uh, for the meeting in a couple of weeks, uh, because, uh, I'm sure we're strapping the cash flow with Central SC Alliance, because they were expecting this back in March.
Something's happening because they can't return my phone call. Have they shut the phones off? It's been ten days.
Well, I still, I don't believe they're working from the offices yet, so. If you call it an office phone, they should still be able to retrieve that message remotely, though, so. But I'll be glad to follow up and, and get somebody to return your call, so.
I was just thinking, not, not so long ago, we had to approve three, remember?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we...
And we've been trying really hard to get one approved at each meeting, so we only have to approve one each quarter.
Yeah.
But their billing cycles are, are a little bit off, and, uh, so. But we, we'll take care of that at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions?
Yeah. Are, are any other companies having any problems with their COVID-nineteen?
Uh, we have had some, uh, we've had quite a few, actually, that have had problems as we get along, but it's a matter of public information that, uh, Samsung closed down. They actually closed down a couple of times. Once, they had their first case, they closed down for a couple of days for a deep cleaning, and they had some more cases, then they closed down for two weeks. Um, as I understand it, there are still cases popping up, but they're, they're pretty set in their protocols now. They know how to handle it. Virtually everybody is doing the pre-employment, the, the pre-workday screen. Everybody's temperature is taken before you enter the building. They're asked questions, uh, that they're supposed to respond to. Everybody's encouraged to stay home if they're sick, and if, if they are sick, and if they do have fever, they're immediately sent for testing. Now, it still takes a couple of days to get those tests back now, but in, in originally, it was a couple of weeks, and that was creating a problem. And because, as you know, about ninety percent of the tests end up being negative. But they had workers who were out for a couple of weeks because they just didn't know. So, those things have leveled out, because we can now get tests back in, uh, in, in a couple of weeks. We also had issues with some companies that had laid off workers. They couldn't get the workers back because the unemployment benefits are actually kind of lucrative, and, but even those, uh, those issues have, uh, flattened out now. Um, I actually got a, a call just on Monday, uh, from an industry who needed some help. They wanted to know what other industries were doing in terms of mask policies. Were they requiring people to wear masks, or was it optional? The answers are across the board. About a third require, about a third are optional, and the, the other third doesn't really have a, a formal policy, um, but, uh, we got them some answers really quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your presentation.
Rick, though, I'd just like to say thank you to you and Kara for all you do. Uh, I know the slowdown is not what you want. I mean, you like to be busy.
Yes, sir.
And we certainly appreciate all you do. We know how important economic development is to Newberry County, and thank you again for all you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams.
All right, with that said, item number ten, appointments. Newberry County Memorial Hospital Board has requested that council consider for approval the appointment of Dr. Phil Milner as the Medical Staff Representative. Dr. Milner will replace Steve Biermingo, who is no longer with the hospital. So, uh, do we have a motion to accept Mr. Dr. Milner as, uh, the Medical Staff Representative? Motion by Mr. King, second by Mr. King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
I have an appointment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Also to the hospital board.
Mm-hmm.
Jeffrey Wicker, or Jeff Wicker, to replace Bob Burks, who has moved away.
Okay. Jeff Wicker. All right, you have heard the recommenda, a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Any other appointments? Okay. Uh, public comments by anyone who signed up? None? Uh, comments or requests to the county administrator?
I have none, sir.
All right, council comments from, um, Mr. Scurry?
I have none, sir.
Uh, Dr. Rucker?
Um, I have none, except to say that this, it was nice not, it was nice to have been done with the budget tonight.
Yes.
Smooth, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Reader?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone that came to the unity, uh, the unity of March, um, last Sunday. It, it was a great turnout, um, and it, uh, it was a great, great surrounding. Um, and I hope everyone just continue to keep up with the good work when it comes down to being unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Uh, nothing, sir.
Mr. Stopman?
Um, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I would just like to say, folks, uh, we have a very important runoff, uh, down in District Two coming up on Tuesday. Uh, please don't sleep through this. Uh, we need everyone to turn out and vote. Uh, it's very important that we have a qualified person to come in here and sit in this seat. So, thank you very much, and I hope all of you will vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stopman. Mr. King?
Yes, sir. Uh, we had the employee service awards tonight, including in those awards were Tony Idenner, Sheriff's Office, twenty years. Twenty-seven years ago, while I was still a law enforcement officer, Tony came to work with the city police department, and he worked for me. I was his training officer, and I want to thank him for the twenty-seven years that he's applied to his chosen profession. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, and again, quite a nice guy.
Yes, he is.
Uh, I, 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 just a while ago, not really good with him, but he, everywhere you see him, he's smiling, and, I mean, it's just a welcome smile when you need somebody, and, and Tony, again, um, if your, um, mentorship can bleed out to others, we'll be blessed for years to come, so, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, with that being said, uh, future meetings will be county council meeting on July first. Um, um, Public Safety and Courts Committee will be July thirteenth. Uh, county council meeting will be July fifteenth. And if I'm not bad wrong, just another little tidbit for, because, so, we do support the Lake Murray Tourism Country. The Lake Murray fireworks will be July fourth, and I think that will be right around nine, nine fifteen, for anybody who wants to, uh, view that. Um, so, just, again, FYI there. If, uh, no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Reader, second. All right, we are adjourned.